I was going, who moved that chair right there? And I'm going, I can't see.
I can move it.
So, uh...
I thought, I didn't know we had enough seats.
The cost goes up when you move the chair.
So, fellas, we're gonna make our way through a series of questions that need to be answered so that in the near, near, near future, we can put the form of government to rest. Let's go to, um, Jeff, I'm gonna try to do this. Appreciate you doing this, this is wonderful. It'll be a lot easier for all of us. All right, so, this is why I'm telling everybody, study, 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 study Georgia municipal associations, model charter. We don't need to go through all of this because we are number six. Mixed at large, single-member district system, mayor elected separately, council shall be composed of an even number, ten, of members elected by the orders, blah, blah, blah. That's just nice, nice to know. All right, so, we're, we're option number six. First decision of the day talks about residency requirements, and that's on page forty-six and forty-seven. Okay? Terms. Laurie, if you see, if you see something that we don't need to consider, that gets covered in state laws, stop us. You wanna come down this side?
No, no, I'll, I'll, I'll pull out my...
What's that?
I've got it here.
Okay. So, anybody that can't see, come on, I'll trade places with you. You, one-fifty? How's that, folks?
What page is that?
Page, oh, forty-six.
Thank you.
Can you guys see it better now? All right, so, we're, we're at terms of qualifications for offices. Mayor and members of council, this is, we're gonna have to talk about this because mayor and members of the city council shall serve the terms of four years until their respective successors are elected and qualified. Here's the first thing I wanna ask about is, the mayor or council member, unless at first, shall have been a resident of the city for twelve months prior to the date of the election. Each member shall continue to reside there and during that member's period of service and to be registered and qualified to vote in municipal elections. Are we okay with that staying the same?
That's state law.
Good, thank you, that's exactly what I want you to say. All right, so, folks, here's, when we go through this, assuming we get answers on this, so, state law, we don't have to take that up at all. On the ones we do decide, if we can determine whether we have consensus or not, the attempt is gonna be to put this on a consent agenda if there are no objections.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
You also need to make sure that you're saying that person also has to be a resident of that district. Like, for commission district, pardon? Yes, it says that you must be a member of the city. Laurie resided in its authority to govern.
In the district, yes.
But you also have to be, you have to be a resident of the district that you work for.
Right.
Look at the next sentence, you gotta say district.
Well, the one that you were looking at on page forty-four just said, you have to be a member of the city.
All right, let's, we wanna capture that language for sure, district residency requirements. And that is, is anybody in disagreement with that? Madam Chair? Yes, sir?
I don't think just that the mayor's, you know, citywide commission needs to be in the district.
Yes. So, Laurie, since you're the one getting ready to write all this good stuff.
Yeah.
All right, you're going to capture our existing layout, which is eight single district commissioners, two super districts, and a mayor. The pleasure of this body is to stipulate that they live in the districts from which they're representing, they've been elected to represent for the duration of their term. Is that correct, what I'm hearing? Does that meet with everybody's approval? Or on the table?
Yes.
Anybody doesn't like that? All right, now we move on to, Jim, is there anything you see that we need to be, you want considered here?
Well, we have two that are elected, they have super districts.
They do.
That would be what does not super district.
Okay, so, the commentary on this charter is actually wonderful. And if you were to go to the National Civic League, it's the very same, pretty much the very same format and order. And they have good commentary too, so if you're, you got time and you're sick of watching Netflix, it's not a bad thing. All right, forty-seven to forty-nine, all right, qualifications for membership on a municipal governing body may vary since blah, 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 I'm not gonna read this to you. Currently, general law poses a twelve-month residency requirement unless a different period of time is specified in the charter. Now, we'll come on down, and you let me know when we're finished reading with this, because we're getting, ready to get into a fun thing here pretty quick. Tell me this, is everybody okay with a twelve-month residency required for the commissioners? Anybody have heartburn on that? And did you say that's state law too?
You can...
You can change it if you want, but...
But not.
You can't make it longer.
You gotta make it longer. So, the question was, do you, is there any desire to make the mayor, uh, be there longer since, to encourage, there's pros and cons to that too, I'm just throwing it out there. Leave it at twelve months or make it longer?
For the mayor?
For the mayor.
What is that?
I'm looking for feedback.
Is there a difference between, like, what is the current?
I don't...
Requirement.
Twelve months.
Okay, so it's twelve months now. Leave it? All right, page fifteen, we're getting into ethics. Sheffy, this is next session, just mark these pages so when we do get the document, we can start that one, will you? All right, we may choose to move to a new ethics and transparency article. I would direct you to read pages fifty-one to fifty-seven because it covers a series of things. This, this abuts the concept of abstentions too, which I don't see on my list, but I know it is supposed to matter. Yes, sir?
Um, my understanding from way back long ago, abstentions were looked at legally and approved, that they are legal. Now, I think if they were...
The charter has the left to take that away.
Well, I'm just saying, at this point, they were legal, but if you do have, allow them, I think that if you abstain, you should say why, right after you abstain.
Sorry, I think she's, and I, and I like you speaking, but I think this is what she might be talking about, is, we're gonna put language in there to prevent people from getting up and walking out, and then, so to prevent the vote, so, we could either do it as, if they get up and walk out, it goes with whatever the majority votes, or if they get up and walk out, it's a no.
We'll get to that in a second, let's try to take this in order 'cause it leads to this, and if it isn't here, we'll come back to it.
Chair, one?
Yes, ma'am.
I think there's another question down here.
All right, very good, thank you, Ms. Sheffy.
So, with regard to the abstention, the only means to actually abstain would be a conflict of interest. If they don't have a conflict of interest, then to denote that, they should not be able to abstain, because at that point, that is, that's almost trying to quorum bust.
That's right. And that has happened in the past.
So, making it a vote in the affirmative will keep them from leaving.
Yep.
And they abstained without saying why, maybe why they were for abstaining.
Can I time out and get back to where we are on this thing? I know I led you through this. Could I ask one of the two attorneys to explain the term fiduciary? This is an important thing for us to know. I just wanna make sure everybody has in common, elected and appointed officers of the city are trustees and servants of the residents of the city and shall act in a fiduciary capacity for the benefit of such residents. Who wants to take that?
Fiduciary is someone who has a legal obligation to either funds or individual that is essentially under their care. So, the classic thing, would you think in terms of a settler or is a person who creates a funds trust? The beneficiary is the person who has the benefit from the trust, and the trustee is the person who manages that fund, subject to the terms of what the settler or grantor said, I want you to be responsible for. So, they have a obligation to fulfill the duties as described and not to do things for their own best interest. So, how many times is easier to explain it by, by example than it is by definition? But it is someone who has a legal obligation to look out for the interest of someone else rather than themselves. Hopefully, that's close enough for your understanding.
Yep. All right, that came up in public meetings as well, interestingly enough. So, I, I think, for the moment, if that's okay with the body, I'd like to hang onto that until we get to review the documents we're gonna get next week on the, the ethics, and see if we could wrap this portion into that. Is it, Laurie, is it okay for us to take, to capture ethics languages and put it in one article?
However you want to do it.
Okay, Sheff, Ms. Robinson?
Are we guaranteed to have that information at our next meeting?
As long as I get the information reset to me, yes.
Okay. Do you need the version I sent, or are you waiting on the jury version for attorney?
Attorney phone plan.
All right, so, twelve dot eighteen is page fifty-nine. If that's okay with you guys, we're trying to package all ethics-related issues in one article, so that anybody that wants to look at it doesn't have to go fishing all over the charter to find it. Uh, page fifty-nine.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Did we resolve the abstention?
Nope, but we're gonna come back to that, 'cause it's, we're trying to go in order here. Organization and procedures, all right, this, this is when, here's, here's a no-brainer. Section two dot eighteen, when do they set up the, take the oath, when do they swear in new members? And so, the, the no-brainer is first meeting of the new year, January. If we can accept that language, I'll put that on a consent agenda. Is there anybody that has an issue with that? So, first meeting of January. All right, special meetings, page sixty. There's the oath right there. Regular and special meetings on page, this is fifty-nine, here's sixty, actually, yeah, it is. We need to determine, special meetings of the city council may be held on the call of the mayor or how many members of the city council?
So, who wants to first, January, you say they're going to have an organization on the first?
When, the first meeting of the new year is when they elect the mayor pro temp?
Yeah.
They take the oath?
So, they say the first meeting, so they need the first Tuesday in January?
Yeah.
Now, unless it falls on a holiday.
Right. First meeting of, I think, first meeting of January gives you flexibility that way, but it would be the first meeting of the new year, is the issue. Okay? All right, so, special meetings, folks, what's, what is the current and what is the preferred way of doing things?
Mayor call.
Mayor or...
Simple majority.
All right.
Is that the current structure?
What is the current?
They can have a special meeting, like, where's the, they can use a...
The mayor can call.
Mayor call.
Simple majority.
Okay, simple majority? All right. Well, I, I think it's actually in the charter here too, some...
I think it says simple majority.
Okay, so, are we okay with simple majority? Anybody got another thought?
Does anybody have any input as to when that hasn't been effective?
Say it again?
Does anybody have any input as to when that hasn't been effective? Because if it is effective the way it currently is...
All right, so, two nineteen on page sixty, our special means, we just want that. That is the only, that's the only thing I'm trying to talk. All right, so, we're down to quorum and votes. That's two dot two-one, page sixty-two. Rules of procedure, they will come up with their own, but, uh, quorum and voting, this, this is something that's settled by charter. And, and here, let's describe where this comes into play, there, and here's where we talk about extensions as well. So, a quorum for a commission of eleven is seven. Does anybody have debate on that?
I thought it was six. Quorum.
Quorum is different than how many votes it takes. Yeah, quorum, quorum is what constitutes your ability to have a meeting. All right, so, quorum of seven, let's read this, 'cause this, I wanna make sure we've got everybody right. There are three basic options as to the necessary votes to pass a proposition. The charter may require adoption by a majority of the entire body, not just those in ten. So, let's go to the three options. Option one, abstention is allowed. If we stay with the number seven here, affirmative vote of how or what it may, it would be six council members, shall be required for any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Abstention prohibited. Highly recommended that cities include the following language, barring abstention without cause, as it is possible for abstention to be strategically abused. So, let's read through this, so we all stay on the same page. Seven council members shall constitute a quorum and authorized to transfer business of the city council. Voting shall be by voice vote, the vote shall be recorded, but any member of the city council shall have the right to request a vote call. Except as otherwise provided in this charter, the affirmative vote of ex-council members shall be required for the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Let's move on to, it's going to give us three options in a minute.
So, these are just suggestions, right?
They are suggestions, but they're giving you options, and in this case, we've got three options.
Does everyone know the current?
No.
Yeah, because these are all in the rules of procedure of commission, and so...
If the charter changes, it will force a change in the rules of procedure. So, so, let's, let's come on down here to... Okay, so, what I'm looking for right now is, right now, we require six votes to adopt anything. Here's how that translates. In the not-so-distant history, we would have two or three members walk out, break quorum.
I think going with the alternative to, with abstention being prohibited, except in the instance of conflict of interest, we insist with that.
I personally agree with that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Did I add a little bit of color to that?
Please, please.
Generally, it was not a matter of people leaving the body, destroying the quorum, but if you remember, the mayor only had the ability to vote in this assembly, then it tied. So, if there was five affirmative votes, and there had been five negative votes, the mayor would cast a tie. So, the body would then vote, one of the members would theoretically vote as abstention, so it'd be a five, four, one, five, four, zero, and the mayor would not be able to vote at that time. So, it wasn't a matter of someone getting up and destroying the entire quorum meeting, it was just on that one issue.
Uh-huh, okay.
Then it went to superior court, and the court ruled that an abstention was essentially a non-vote. And so, it, it, it did not create a tie. So, if it was five, four, under this, an abstention can be considered a no vote, which would put you back into a tie. Or if it's considered a yes vote, then it would make you affirmative things. With the change in the mayor having a vote, abstentions have not been as much of an issue. And we obviously have a commissioner, and she may disagree, but I haven't seen many abstentions since that period of time. Historically, that is why, but I didn't want y'all to think that people are just getting out of meetings and walking out. That, that seldom occurs, at least in my experience.
Okay. Okay. So are you aware of the other options here?
I mean, even if you want the abstention allowed, the B part says the abstention is noted as a negative vote.
Right.
Which, just for the record, the person is abstaining, but then it counts as a no anyway. I don't know if I agree with that.
I don't think it's clear.
I think if you're saying you should have the potential reason.
Same, it's not a yes or, right? Didn't you say the Supreme Court ruled that...
Well, I believe it was Judge, Judge Overstreet who ruled that it was essentially either affirmative or negative.
Okay.
But I believe that you came by charter, say that it is affirmative or negative vote or non-vote. Obviously, there's suggesting that you have some obligation to voice while you're abstaining as opposed to sometimes people would not vote.
But in your experience, it's been a non-issue since the mayor said a vote?
I don't recall anyone, I mean, there's been a couple of abstentions, but the people voice, voice while they're abstaining, but there hasn't been a, I don't recall what you argue to say is strategic abstention.
And votes like commissions and city councils, that is how it typically works. However, the fact that you adopt Roberts' Rules of Order as your parliamentary authority, if you say that an abstention is equating to a no vote that goes against Roberts' Rules of Order, that Roberts' Rules of Order specifically recommends not to do that, hence the reason why the court probably decided the way that they decided because that entity had probably adopted Roberts' Rules of Order. So I would not recommend that.
So alternative two, with no abstentional, of quorum voting, abstention prohibited. Make sure you're reading both parts of these.
So, question, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So are we saying, best I want the attorney to just mention, are we saying that if they're, they're actually part of the body, when the vote is cast, if they must either vote one way or the other, not taking the vote yes or no? Is that what we driving, if they're very much...
In practice, that's what it results in. Yes. Secondly, though, Part B addresses the issue of abstentions. This is part of no abstention. So it talks about, "City council shall abstain from voting on any matter, blah, 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 except when such a council member has a conflict of interest." In other words, it's compelling them to vote. It's what they're there for. All right, so...
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before the end of, before the end of that statement, there's 10, that the majority, if the vote is standing, the majority. So if it's a majority no, then that vote would be a no. If it was majority yes, then that vote would be a yes. So I think that's very clear, and I think that would help us determine.
I agree. So that, that is...
I was, I was prepared, but...
Yes.
Yeah. Is there anybody that has a different thought? Shep, I don't necessarily have a different thought so much as I want to make sure we're clear that this assists, because I know the question was brought up, well, since the mayor hasn't voted, it's not going to be that big of a deal. It becomes a deal if they have quorum that is not before 11.
Exactly.
If they have named, if they have eight people now, we have, you know, we don't have a type record of that. So things like that could become an issue if you don't have the full permission. So I'm in favor of this, the abstention.
So alternative two, no abstention? Is there anyone that has another thought on that, or are we all pretty much around the same?
What's alternative two?
Alternative two, there's two parts to it. There's the first part.
Seven counts as a quorum, six vote.
So that's exactly what we have now.
So, okay, B then. Can I timeout on something really quickly? This is slightly taking us out of where I've got to find it, but there is currently something in our charter that requires six votes even when you only have seven people present, which effectively means, yeah, you might have a quorum, which can't run exact any business. That question will come up, so put this in the back of your head. When you have seven, or eight, or nine, do you still require six votes, or do you require a simple majority?
Six votes.
I think you don't have to... That would be six votes. It's because of ordinance, even if we have less people, you don't have your districts properly represented to do less than that.
That's right.
So, yeah.
Say that again, because I'm trying to understand this.
If you only have...
They have your district representation.
Uh huh. You won't say votes.
You do have a super district person, that's the line, the lineup. Okay.
Maybe two super districts around.
Would you still have district representative?
Ms. Bachelors?
I think we've talked about the potential for abuse on people walking out of a meeting or abstaining, but there's also a potential of abuse on the other end of that too, where I might call a meeting, special called meeting at a very inconvenient time so I can make sure I have my seven people there, and as long as I have a majority, then I can push through my agenda. So we want to make sure that we're not going to the other end of the spectrum. If it's not broken right now, I don't stand to be changing the way that it is.
Well, I'll tell you, let me describe, Jimmy chimed in on this, Francie, you too. If you wind up with, you know, it's flu season, you got two people out, do you still require the same margin of votes as you...
Yes.
All right, that's, that's the consensus, that's what it is.
Because we shouldn't make decisions about a city based on somebody's views.
Right. Okay. All right, anybody else have any other thoughts?
All right, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In your, in the sample language, it requires that the abstention be done in writing in advance of a meeting.
But it doesn't just...
I'm not sure if the institute has any doubts on that, but that could be a little bit problematic in terms of any type of motions that may be made during the meeting. And so that could...
In translation?
...because almost cause you to be in conflict with your own rules to vote and that, so you may want to consider maybe not today decide, but whether or not a person could announce their conflict at the time of the vote.
That's important. Yeah, I agree. Okay. All right, does anybody have any objections yet? All right.
I have a question.
Ms. Robinson?
So I thought for the commission, motions have to be on that agenda ahead of time so they're aware. How often do motions come up in the meetings that weren't already under judgment?
There is some degree of added items being added, and so you would not be able to necessarily respond to that. And also, on occasion, things kind of get added to the agenda at the end if it's done with dissent that occurs, so...
Okay.
Again, I think you, we're working on the exceptions better than the rule, but I think that's just something to be all focused on.
All right.
Well, and I just want to clarify too, that sometimes things may come up on an agenda where it lists the business name and not the first, the owner's name. So then, once you're in the commission body and you see who it is, then you realize that you have a conflict. So I think leaving that open makes more sense since it's been a factor so far.
All right. You guys figure out the language.
So it doesn't have to be in writing, it just needs to be disclosed.
Yeah. Okay. All right, let's, next one is emergencies, 2 dot 24. The state standardized the city of Augusta, is that correct, on moniker? Over and over and over. The state, the state started calling it Augusta, Richmond County, for purposes of this, it's...
The name has been adopted as Augusta.
Augusta, Georgia. So city of Augusta, Georgia.
It's a city.
It's important elements in a note, so they won't have to go back and redo it. All right, 60, emergency meetings. All right. So, thank Hurricane, guys. Right here, the ordinance, procedures. Every proposed ordinance should be introduced in writing, blah, blah, blah. Okay, that's, that's easy, that's already done. So page 64, we're done, 65, we're done. Emergencies. All right. To meet a public emergency affecting life, health, property, or public peace, the city council may convene on the call of the mayor or, I think we wrote earlier, six, six council members and promptly adopt an emergency ordinance. But such ordinance cannot levy, levy taxes and grants and so forth, and it will sunset, can't borrow money except for loans to be repaid within 30 days. Is six the right number for this? What is the budget of the body?
Yes.
Okay. So six for emergencies, six votes to convene and enact. All right. Come on back down a little further. Page 70 to 73. Council manager form of government, appointment qualifications and compensation. Okay? And this is accomplished by contract, where you have a contract with the new manager that handles all of this. Level of qualifications will vary depending on the size of the city, blah, blah. Master's degree with concentration in public administration, public affairs, and public policy. This is recommending two years' experience.
Madam Chair, I can't go back up, just one observation, because where it says that it will be for an indefinite period of time. Frequently, you'll find people at certain level, they're going to only come with a contract, say for a three-year contract.
Okay.
And so if you put in there that it's for an indefinite period of time, you may limit the number of people that you make it as, I'm not saying that you should or should not, but do reflect on...
You don't want to be limited by the charter for what you need to actually hire somebody?
Yes. You know, someone may not take it on indefinite, meaning that I have to play it will without other terms at all.
Right. Does everybody understand that, or could you hear them?
Yeah.
What's that?
Boy turner may be to take that contract.
Unless you coach came back up. Ms. Angela.
But did we not ask Carl Vincent Institute at the last meeting to come up with the verbiage, charter verbiage for this? So if they're already working on that, then do we really need to discuss this part?
Yes, because they need to know the numbers, and we have not given them to them. What numbers? How many votes, what's the form?
But I'm talking about the count, like, the city manager portion. We asked them to come up with verbiage.
I thought you wanted to discuss it.
So we were supposed to discuss it, yes, in the workshop.
Are you real?
Oh, here's the magical document with the description. I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Okay, so, this is kind of important for me.
Question of...
Yes, sir.
On the head of a, I heard the word contract.
Yes.
Would the city manager be hired under state contract, not state contract, as a state employee?
No.
So would there be a, I sense there's a...
Let's, let's let the attorneys answer this question.
Not a state employee? Can I just, city employee?
Please.
Well, city employee, state, what I'm saying is not on a contract.
Yes, they are under a contract.
It's under a contract.
But not, not a city employee. Go ahead, Laurie.
I just wanted to let everybody know that this is coming up in a second, but I think it'll allay your frustration. We printed out for both, because we don't know what you want, so we gave you a smorgasbord from National League of Cities and GMA, each one, and what they define as the powers and duties for the city manager. So I'm going to hand that out.
Okay. So, so this is quite close to what we discussed today. The difference is, we ask for four years' experience because we, we also, I'm concerned in wanting to make sure we don't box ourselves so much that we don't get the right kind of applicants, or we get somebody that comes in and tells us what they want to be paid.
So, yeah, we weren't supposed to address pay in the charter, I thought that was ordinance.
No, no, it is, it is, but I, what you do for qualifications sets the table for that.
I thought that's what we were getting, qualifications, not duties.
Say that again?
I thought that's what we were getting was qualifications and not powers and duties, because we've had this for months.
Uh huh.
I thought we were getting qualifications.
Well, this is what Marcie asked us to share today.
So at our last workshop, when there was some confusion, and I thought that it was clarified, we had asked at the last workshop for that description of the city manager to be written up so that we could review it and ensure that it met with the intent of what this body had already voted on. Am I right?
What parts did we want?
But that's, that's what our, we requested last time. Do you recall that?
I agree, that's what we said, but that's not what we got. In fact, they asked several times what was the intent of the motion, and I gave the intent of motion. I thought it was clear when we left this room about the intent, and we were supposed to discuss the motion after we rewrote it.
Yeah.
It's on here?
Well, part of it, yes. So on, on that document, point A and B are going at the fundamental issue around the ability to hire and fire.
Right, well, where do we have qualifications?
Qualifications is not listed in this part.
Okay. But I will, I will draft.
Okay.
It'll be general.
I just want to clarify, when, when you're saying you'll draft it, just because of the conversation that came up at the meeting earlier, does that mean that first you guys have to have your cadence meeting and then you have to get permission from the chair and the maister to move forward with doing that? Because that's what it sounded like earlier.
I'm going to drop.
I think we want to make sure that we have the will as a committee, and that's, that's the challenge, is making sure that we have the will of the committee, not just the preference of an individual member of the committee. So, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that we had agreed on it at the last workshop.
I thought you just voted on it at the meeting.
No, we, we...
No, no. I just don't know, I've not heard what you wanted.
It was, it was going to be, so we had discussed it, we were supposed to review that language, and then we can move to vote. But we don't have that language because there is the concern about the period versus, you know, whether or not it was a continuation of that same sentence, and it was clarified at the workshop, because it was brought up at the regular meeting and then at the workshop, and y'all got on the same page, and then we asked for the verbiage. So at this point, I think what we need is the verbiage.
Since I was calling, sit in the conversation, this is what I, what I recollect that took place at that meeting, Carl Vincent asked for several times, what was the intent of that substitute motion? And I heard the motion, the motion read back into everybody's head a couple of times, but I never actually heard the word, well, for example, my intent of this motion was to say that the city manager had to report to the body, the commission, on my intent. I never heard that. So, as we now asked Carl Vincent this morning, I said, well, did you get the language you needed to come up with the verbiage of the intent for the city manager as it relates to the authorities to hire and fire? That's what I asked him this morning, and I think that was the intent for what they brought back, this information, that gave us what the authorities give as force hiring, hiring, firing. I think that's what they brought back. I didn't, I didn't think, I didn't think we tasked them with bringing back a job description of the city manager with us back at that time. If that's what I'm hearing you say this time, I didn't think that was a task, a job description.
So, for clarity, if you guys can verbalize for me, typical, typical when you have done this type of consulting with other cities, what has been the expectations from those cities for your interaction with the...
Individual members?
No, no, no. In regards to, like, what have been their, what has been their statement of work, what have been the requirements that you have provided to them, or has it mostly just been in a... Or has it mostly just been in a, we provide information? What has been that relationship?
I do draft up the language if that's what drafts.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, once, once the will of the committee is known, then I draft up the committee. Now, this is done in a different way than I've done before. This is kind of pieced, you know, and it's not, it's not always clear. Because everything's supposed to go through Marcy. It's not always clear what needs, necessarily what needs to be done. That's what we go over in the cadence meeting and ask them. So I don't know, because it's difficult if you have eleven different members, because we get different things from each person, so we have to have one person go through.
Sure, sure, and that's fine. What I'm trying to get at is, I'm trying to figure out where the disconnect is. Is it a disconnect in how we are operating to effectively help you do your job? Or is the job, is the issue on your side as regards to how information's being transpired? Because if, if this body is operating in a way that is different from how you are used to doing this, and I can absolutely understand where the confusions are. So how do we fix that piece? Because what's happening is, we're voting on things, we're also asking for language. We may get it, we may not get it. Where is the breakdown? If we're operating different from what is, what is best practice?
So, I think part of it is, maybe we weren't clear on kind of what topic you wanted to have addressed. Because my understanding was that what we were going to talk about was around that, kind of the set of authorities and responsibilities, powers and duties of the manager. That that's what was coming out of conversation that came from the motions that Mr. Lewis had. But the issue around qualifications, we did have some conversation around that. But I don't recall us having a kind of clear consensus on where that piece was. I think we got more of a consensus this morning after it was discussed in the committee meeting.
So where do you think, in your professional opinion, where do you think the breakdown is happening?
Well, I think, yeah, part of it is our ensuring that we're understanding. But I think part of it is also kind of giving the information from the chair back to the committee, I think is also one of the big pieces of this. And so there's a, it's a triad, right? And we've got communication going from us to the chair and the chair back to us, but it's not getting from the chair all the way back to the committee. And what we had, I believe what we had agreed on is that we would not be sending information to the committee as a whole, we'd send it to the chair, and the chair would send it to the committee.
Sure.
So I think that's where that weak link is.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis had one of Mr. France's.
You want to go first, I, you?
I was next, anyway. Under my impression from the last workshop we had, I fatally stated what the motion was, and I asked for clarity, and everybody was in agreement. And I asked twice to Mr. France, all we could. And you guys stated that we would change the language and make it fit to what you intended. That was the last statement. And we all left out of here smiling.
And that's what, and that's what I believe these two documents show, our language and is consistent with that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
So now we want to... Now the most important rule.
I think we're looking for specific writing for our charter, because now if that's the case, then we have to figure out how to combine these two and make them work for what we already agreed on.
Combine it, it's in language already.
No, it's just that there are more issues. So, so what we need at this point is to make sure that this captures your essence. We can then fine tune it so that you can then have it presented as a formal motion to accept. But part of the issue here is that you could focus on A and B essentially, largely A. But there are other powers and duties of the manager see through the eye on one and two from thirteen to fourteen on the other. We want to make sure if there are any of those other duties and responsibilities that you see as critical for the manager to fulfill, that we don't miss those.
And you have something beyond this that needs to be added. This is just, since we didn't have direction as to other powers, this is just to give you what is just a standard one, a model one. But that doesn't mean you can't add or subtract from it. But we had to provide something to you where you can digest in order to determine what best suits the city, because you're in the city, so you would have a better idea of what fits and what doesn't. Once you decide that, draft it.
Let's take a moment, can I recommend something to the body? Let's take a moment and read Georgia Municipal Association to see if there's anything in there that you want to take out, that you don't like. Just go through and read it, do it independently here. Then we'll come back around real quick to see where everybody is. We can also go and harvest language if we look, or take up things we don't like national civically. That will lend direction to Carl Benson to draft our recommended language.
And just so that you all know, some of it may be the same, because Georgia Municipal Association modeled theirs after national civically.
Does it cover anything about food? Is that normal language, where it is saying responsible to the council rather than reports to? Is that the preferred language?
Yeah. Drive on.
Under both of them, the first, the first line, the first couple of lines. Chair acknowledges Coach Frank.
Well, I think what we've got to keep in mind is, we don't follow the directive that we're headed. We made a decision that we would go to a city manager council form of government. With that being said, we want some clarification of the powers and duties of the city manager, the mayor, and the council based on that relationship. There was some confusion on some wording, and one of the things that we passed relative to, did this mean this, or did this mean that? Did this mean that the commission still had some oversight over hiring and firing? It was stated it did not. So what Carl Benson gave us two model charts that addresses powers and duties of city managers, mayor, and city council, which is in line with what we had proposed occurs. This is no different than what we had proposed happening, giving the city manager control of the day-to-day operations of city government, of its directors and its managers and all of that. And then the commission and mayor would have control of the city manager. But that may be allowing commissioners, the biggest problem in the bus business then, commissioners being involved in the day-to-day operations of running the city government. So I thought we'd gotten to that point. So what we've asked Carl Benson to bring back to us was not just specifically to question what Mother Frank said, but the overall question of what are model powers and duties of a city manager and a mayor and a council based on what we have already decided that we wanted. This is what we had before. Carl Benson, in advisement capacity, is to provide us information that we asked for, but they are not hiring to tell us what to do. And so that's where I think we are. We asked for information, they provided information. We can't sit back and say, well, this ain't what we want, this is exactly what we asked for. And we got it, okay? Now it's our job to go back and say, does this capture the intent of what we were talking about? To me, this captures it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frank.
Madam Chair, I'm sort of totally agreeing with Coach Brian with what he's saying. But I think in order to put this question to rest about that particular motion, that we give that motion based on the information that Carl Benson has provided, we have right here in our hand, give that particular motion to Carl Benson and let them craft a motion that's more in line with the language they have here to replace that motion that we already confused.
I have an apple, I'm sorry. For share.
It is, I don't think it's in there permed to craft motions. They can craft language, I would imagine, but crafting emotions isn't, I would say.
Okay, good, well, what would I take? They craft language. But one way or another, we need to get to the point where we put this to rest, we'll beat this dog to death.
So, with regard to the adjustments you wanted to potentially make to the motion on our next meeting, instead, would you be happy with crafting language that we can review and having that be the settling of the issue versus you going back to change the motion?
I'm so glad you asked.
I think what they were trying to point out too is, it covers that motion right here in this first paragraph. It says that the city manager reports to the commission, and that down here it goes into very fine detail about how they are over the department heads and they can hire and fire them. So we don't actually, we're good?
So I'm sure happy with that.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, understand that, but we still have a live motion out there that's...
It's not live.
Why is it live?
Because we already voted on it.
We voted a motion to the next meeting when they...
No, 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 we voted on him changing the motion at a pre, at a future meeting. A new motion isn't on the table.
And I'm, yes, and also, with that also being said, we asked for you to do that last workshop meeting we had, and you guys did exactly what I asked you to do. So therefore, the clarification of the motion, the wording of the motion is already determined.
Okay, okay, so let's, if I may, if I may, just for my clarification. In order to solve this dilemma that we have, we have a dilemma here. So what, no, not we have a dilemma, because I'm a part of the charter. So we have a dilemma, okay? So my question is, which other way we need to submit this or do this to solve this problem? I recommend that we come up as a charter, as a group, a way to satisfy this problem. And it is a problem.
How would you like the problem to be satisfied?
I would like to satisfy the problem by changing the language where it requires a city manager to report directly to the commission to be granted authority. That's why I would like to change it.
So are, hold on. So are we changing the motion, or are we... Because we already have the language, so do we need to change the motion if we have the language that already says?
This is my point I'm trying to make. Which of, what we need to do, and let's take care of it. Because I don't want to mix draws, because everybody have a different opinion on the way to do it. But which one is more politically correct and legally correct? Let's do it that way. That's my position.
This is the legal way right here. The language that embodies the intent of the motion is here.
Okay, so, okay, so let's drive on that for a second. So if the language is here, then what do we do about the motion that we voted unanimously to adopt? What do we do about that? So it just dies?
No, the motion was voted.
So what happens to the language when somebody picks that motion up and say, it's in, it's in...
The motion doesn't supersede the language. The language clarifies the motion. The language has clarified the motion. You don't have to go back and change the motion to match the language.
Why not?
Because we have said to go along with the intent that was agreed upon.
Chair, Madam Chair, it has to reflect, it has to mirror. It's not up for interpretation. This morning, the attorney said, this morning the attorney said that he had a different interpretation than Mr. Frank's. I had a different interpretation than what the attorney said this morning. So we don't want it up for interpretation.
But does this...
I love this. So let the, so let the motion reflect this in the language.
Okay, the motion isn't what goes in the charter. This goes in the charter. This, so if this is correct.
I got, I got what you're saying, but we need to be consistent across the board. Because I've been, like I said, with this commission, previous commission, we don't need any room for interpretation.
They don't have to interpret the motion though.
I hear what I'm saying. I won't go back and forth with you and Ms. Backus.
My hand is up, my hand is up.
Well, I wasn't finished talking, I was still talking, I got interrupted. I wasn't finished talking about, I wasn't finished talking. Okay, again, like I said a few minutes ago. Ms. Backus, would you like to talk with me? Well, first I'm going to talk.
I think it would be really cool if the rules were applied equally to everybody.
I didn't know I was ridiculous before. Everybody just kind of jumped in, I was still talking.
Yes, as you did to me earlier, so I guess that works.
Madam Chair, okay, okay.
Every chair will retire.
Okay, children, that's right there in the same.
This is what I was asking for, actually.
Madam Chair, the only thing I want to prevent in the future, somewhere down the road, is something coming back saying, we voted to say the city manager must report to the commission to be granted authority. That's the only thing I'm trying to prevent. So if we, if everybody's in agreement that we have accomplished that, I'm going on ready. I'm fine, if we have accomplished that, I'm fine, okay? And I'm ready to move forward.
Can everyone agree that if we directed Attorney Brill to go ahead and craft language, we'll bring it back? Bring it, bring it back?
Would it be different, do you want it different than this?
No, you're combining the intents using very specific language, not using the word report, because that has diff, that's what's in the...
Well, here it's not, in here it's responsible.
Okay, that's correct. But I think for the comfort and the clarification for the people that are going to have to live under this, I fall down on the side that unfortunately things are run with in our city, and I think it might require some additional elucidation.
Well, you need to direct me on that, you need to give me guidance on that than beyond this. And also, I think Dana maybe should step in and clarify the motions issue.
I was about to ask, maybe, perhaps you can remind, what was the motion that he's referring to? What was the motion?
The motion was a substitute motion where it talked about department heads. The motion was a substitute motion where it talked about department heads. And that was the same motion that came up in our last meeting during, when we were supposed to be approving the.
And so the motion was to have Carl Vincent bring back this?
During the workshop, that's what was discussed. And they brought it back, but they want to go back and change the motion so that it's more clear and just put it on this.
So, Mr. France, you want this to be what is, you agree with what's written here?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so you can simply just make a new motion?
Well, that's what we discussed this morning, and I was going to do it the next meeting, is it some of the new motion?
Is it as simple as just saying that we need a motion to adopt this?
Yeah, that's exactly what needs to happen. If that was satisfying the.
The whole document.
Well, we have.
This is two different ones, so.
Well, that's.
Satisfying the two?
Let's just say that that's a whole GMA. We're playing, so we're dealing with semantics here. And I did semantics can be abused, but at the same time, we spend more time on tangential than the entire scope of what we're trying to do here.
Ms. Brill?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just ask, "I" is repeated twice, and then there's a little bit of a typo at the bottom, which I'm guessing you're going to rewrite anyways. Glancing over the second page.
Yes, ma'am.
The National City League has the quote, "The mayor shall be a voting member," so that would need to be added into the GMA one. But other than that, I personally don't have any issues with the GMA document of roles and responsibilities for the mayor, city manager, and city commission. So what I would suggest is, can we focus on, is there any issues with this document here so that we can present it at the next charter review meeting, vote on it, and make it part of the upcoming charter?
So we have two. We have 2.3 and we have 3.04.
The preferred one would be, yeah, the preferred one would be the Georgia one, because it takes into account Georgia law.
So you want the, you want the Georgia, the city council, we prefer 2.01 versus the national?
The 2.3.
You want, you want the 2.16, yeah.
But it would need to add in the mayor is a voting member.
Okay, and you're good with the city council as well? City council?
With that saying, "City Council"?
No, 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 just the power, just the.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see anything wrong with that.
Okay, so.
Chair, Ms. Robinson.
So for the sake of everybody's blood pressure, can we all take, you just said the GMA, can we agree with the change of the mayor having a vote? That the GMA will be adopted and put that on the agenda?
I would like to add, there are just a few other wrinkles of the last four points on our agenda, one of which is, who proposes, who adopts? That'll be a very simple question.
Proposes and adopts what?
Who proposes the manager, who proposes the city attorney?
Those, we have to. But we need to finish this first.
So could we, as a body, agree to adopt the GMA version, which is 8.1, with the add-in that the mayor has a vote and put that on the consent agenda?
Yes. Do you all have that?
So we're going to remove section 3.04 entirely from the Scotty.
Yes, the 3.04 is a total different charter. So this, various outcomes.
They really do mirror each other, they say it very often, but it's.
Typo's going to get fixed, don't you think?
Yes, the day will. Everything Angela spoke about will be addressed, presented.
So in the interest of, when we get this, if you would send it to me, I'll forward it to everybody else. And then anybody that wants to dig in, drill in, well, I'll make a wish, because I'm making a very.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure, so by, so yeah, so saying that we will adopt the powers and duties of the city manager based on what needs here, this document that we adopted will supersede that as far as the language and the other motion that is presented.
It will, but I think we're also going to ask Ms. Brill to see if there's any way you incorporate your motion in that doesn't substantively change.
His motion hasn't been voted on.
So, so propose language. I was just saying, if you would add in anything that strengthens the document from the motion that we tabled, let Merrill Vincent look at that, make a decision one way or the other, and then get it back.
It's already covered.
It's covered in different languages, I understand that, so.
I think he did agree that this language, this language was captured what he was, did it not? Okay, good.
Coach.
Again, motions are not what's going to be presented in the charter. Once we made motions, Carl Vincent will take them and put it into language that we can understand and go into the report. That's where our biggest discussion should occur, is what they report. We are here spending weeks based on the fact that we all agree where we are, but we've tried to wordsmith before Carl Vincent. Carl Vincent has provided us, we just said, the model charter meets the mandate we just went to have, will take that. This is the kind of language that will go in the charter, okay? The motion will not go in the charter. The motion does allow us to have Carl Vincent do their thing. And so the motion and the wording of the motion now is not important as much as what we're going to read through the report.
Don't disagree with what you're saying, but if the motion to dot I's across T's makes some people happy, let's just go ahead and get it done.
Well, they're talking long.
That wastes, that continues the waste of time. So what I want to get, we've got ourselves to a point where the basic nuts and bolts of the changes we want to recommend for the review are there. Got the finance piece? Thank you. We, we got the execution. All we got now is very important, we got to deal with the ethical, ethics part of that. And I thought we got that squared away this morning. So the rest of our time, as we make ourselves through next month of the year, is to take these little things and do what we need to do to make sure they're in order, but it doesn't interfere with the overall intent of what we're trying to do, if that's making any sense. And I think we've had a lot of time worrying about the intent, and we're just trying to get intent to Carl Vincent so they can do their thing.
Very good. Ms. Robinson?
I think one key thing we should remember as a body, and I know we have different opinions of different things, but for the most part, we mostly agree, we do, on most things. The things we usually disagree on, little tiny changes, don't actually change the, what we're doing. So we need to lean on the use of the consent agenda a lot more, so we can get things done, because we typically, now that we're past form of government, we don't have a lot that we disagree on as a body. I think we all have good minds, we all have a lot of information that we have used, and we all share a good bit of information internally. So to do the people's work, to do, like I said, save our own blood pressure, if we can, you know, spend more time focusing on those things and throw them on the consent agenda.
Yep. Mr. France, did you want to say something?
Well, yeah, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on what you're going to say. Because I'm coming from, I guess it hit the background, I was a federal employee. As a federal employee, we had contractors that worked for us as well. Some were said earlier about this position of manager being a contractor type position. And this might throw a little monkey wrench into the fix, but I am, I'm going from the background of a federal employee. As a federal employee, contractors could not supervise government personnel, advice first.
Yeah, so there is a fundamental difference between a contractor and an employee. So I think the more appropriate term would be an employee with an employment contract. That might be kind of the differential kind of issue here, is that the city manager would be a regular employee of Augusta, but that they would have an employment contract that laid out the terms and conditions of their employment, such as compensation, access to a vehicle, vacation days, and those kinds of things.
Okay, so that's more in line.
So we have superintendent. It's essentially a contractor versus a contracted employee.
There you go. Okay, that's where I want to clarify.
Okay, let's focus everybody's attention back over here on qualifications, since we have that on today. The motion that was on the morning agenda, what is the opinion of this body to accept what was printed this morning? So that was a master's degree in category stipulated public administration, blah, blah, blah. I think Sheppey was going to broaden that, and I think that's probably wise. All right, so other than that, ICMA, is everybody still on board with that? And Angela?
I think that contradicts, actually, the discussion that we had earlier, what Carl Vincent Institute had suggested, is that we make it much more, I don't know, general, thinking.
Yep, that's what I just said.
Okay, so.
We could put a little report, if you want, this might, make it general within the charter, so similar to what you had up there, 2.27, or we modify it, and then recommend within the report that these be the qualifications, or whatever qualifications you decide. I would love for you to go over what you want, but we need just one more time for clarification. And then this would be in the report, the committee has recommended that these are the qualifications for anyone who is hired as a city manager. Strongly recommend it.
So Sheppey, when you get home tonight, if you would circulate your substitute motion, which did broaden it, was well received. And if everybody decides they want to accept that, that will go on the consent agenda. Mr. Coleman?
I've only got one question. With these qualifications for a city manager, we're changing the name from administrator, is that going to affect Ms. Allen in any negative way?
My understanding is she will have to apply for it, since it is not an existing job, and that she will have to reapply, and that will be open and advertised like any other position. Is that your understanding, folks?
And based on the qualification, she would technically not be.
What would she be qualified with?
She doesn't have a degree in public administration.
No, but she does business. That's why it would be business one's in there. And also, that ticks another box, because other, it's executive ability you're after. So public administration is one thing, and policies another, ability to manage is, all three of those take pieces of this. Yeah, hang on. There you go. That's what this says, that's not what the motion said.
A couple of things. One, Mr. Coleman, it doesn't matter, like I said this in the very beginning, which if I don't remember, and this is just for clarification, it has nothing to do with it, you know, that a lot of cities in Georgia swap up the names. It's not necessarily the name, it's their powers. And technically, it doesn't matter what it's called, whether it's a city administrator or city manager, those powers are changing, so it's a new job. So she would have to apply for it. Here it says a master's degree with a concentration in public administration, public affairs, or policy with two years' experience in an appointed managerial or administrative position in a local government, or a bachelor's degree in five years of such experience. So it doesn't say anything about a master's business. So if you want that in there, you need to let.
We had it on this morning's agenda to include masters of business, so that if somebody presented, it was to broaden out what might qualify.
Okay, so you're going to have that in your motion?
Yes, I will.
Okay.
All right, so along the same lines, let's come on down here and take a look at.
It's not going, this is for qualifications we put in the report.
All right. I need everybody to focus in on this, because this is important stuff. Georgia being an at-will state is removable at any time, that would be covered in the contract as well, whether it was for cause or without cause. That determines whether the person gets a severance package or not.
You need to put that in, because people get moved out of here and they get there.
If it's a contract employee, then it would be.
It would be in the contract. And that would, that would be a commission thing, that does not hold our claim. So I agree with this, this actually came up when I was talking with several of the attorneys, that all cities, including the city managers, I believe they are currently at-will employees. All right, so that's not a change. This is the important part, the city manager employed at-will and may be summarily removed from office at any time by the city council. Removal of city manager, this is 73. This is fairly pro forma language, it just describes how it goes.
It's an alternative for the.
So you either have the really short language, they're at-will, basically, or you have a more detailed process that requires this vote and some period of time, et cetera, et cetera.
So between, if you want to take a look at this, this describes a rather lengthy process. I don't know if you guys had time to look at this last night or not, but we're deciding between option one and option two. What are the thoughts?
And I do just want to point out, under law, they would still have due process, which is contained in here, you can't get rid of that. So they're going to have to, I mean, well, I would think, Zina, you want to pipe in on that? Whether they would have due process or not, it's part of the will. I don't know how it works under your county, I mean, your city.
As it presently stands, no.
No. Okay. Okay. So it'd be whether or not you want that or not, or something early.
But having the city manager a qualified person, when they have some, they bring in some legal stuff with them, because they want to have some way of getting out of the contract, whatever. So they're going to cover themselves.
Well, that's why you got to negotiate, if they negotiate well. That's up to them to negotiate.
All right, so option one or option two?
One.
Anybody else? Anybody got a different opinion? All right, we'll put option one on the table. All right? Alternative one is at-will. At-will. All right, then we get down to acting city manager. A letter filed with the clerk, the manager, now this is important, too, because who appoints the interim? Does the manager appoint the interim? Does the council appoint the interim? Does the mayor propose? And the council adopts? Go ahead, Laurie.
Usually, I see is that when the manager comes on board, they will designate someone in their absence to be the acting manager.
The manager themselves does that?
Yeah, at the outset of their term. Or, and if that person is no longer with the city, then they would appoint, you know, at that point when they leave, appoint someone else, or they could change it at any time.
Succession planning is reported.
That's what's going on.
It's not, I mean, that's not required, that's how it's normally done, that's all, I will say.
Well, I think we need to maybe.
Zina, do you have a different opinion?
About what happens to you?
About whether or not a manager usually appoints their act, the acting manager in their absence? I don't know how it works here.
The commission will do that, the acting city manager, terminated the city manager.
But I think, so if Allen, for example, goes out of town, or gets sick.
So typically, the deputy will move up, but it's subject to the approval of the commission, so they don't necessarily have to.
Even for vacation?
Oh, for vacation, they don't usually, they just go on vacation, the deputy just, she assigns the work to whoever she wants.
So this isn't just if they're gone completely, this could be if, maybe they have a hospital stay that lasts a month?
Yeah, so there should be, there should be someone underneath you that will handle, so she would handle that administratively, and then his or her own office.
Generally, the manager would do that.
Yeah, they would do that themselves.
So we need to make sure that makes it in the report, because that is not happening currently.
Well, you could put that in the.
It's not happening?
Yeah.
Right now, the administrator has been tasked and the department heads with a succession plan, every department, including her own. So if she goes in the hospital for three months, there should be or will be a succession plan saying this person will take over if she's gone for next number of days or ten days or whatever. But that is right now in the administrator's bucket of things to do. It's a pretty hard one.
So this language kind of covers a lot of this, this.
Yeah, the language in 2.29 is kind of ideal strategy.
All right. Is everybody okay with that? Cheryl, you got a comment?
I got a question.
Come on.
For the attorney. Presently the structure right now with the city administrator, does she not have two deputies?
She has an assistant administrator, she has a deputy.
Okay.
Yeah, and so their duties vary. And so theoretically you would think that those individuals will be able to handle, because they cover a wide range of departments, so they should be able to handle their respective departments. If she's away sick.
I think right now it's structured where one of them's over a certain amount of departments, another one's over other departments.
Yeah.
And my question is, going to a city manager type of government, do we need to discuss what, of those positions or is that something that's going to be done, the commission or what?
That would be managers in this section.
Yeah, because they usually organize their departments the way that they want to organize their departments, so, and it's dependent on their budget, so they can, if they have a certain number of, they can create positions within that budget. So if a city manager wants to have three deputies, if it works within their respective budgets and their salary positions, they can do that, they can reclassify positions.
Since direction, we're going to city, the city manager has the latitude to restructure her.
Yeah, every department head does, subject to the approval of the commission, so long as it works within their respective budget, yeah.
So, and again, this, 229, is all about kind of who is going to oversee, generally oversee the city in the city manager's absence. There's a separate process, if you think about the city manager having been terminated, that then, that then goes to the traditional process of the commission appointing a new manager.
Acting city manager. Yeah, I don't know if there's an acting city manager, so I don't think that would work with it unless you all were changing.
No, it just, it forces succession because it basically just says, as the managers, as exactly the CBI OG had mentioned, that is common practice.
Yeah, so there's a long-term disability or something, usually the commission will step in at.
The city council can revoke such design.
Yeah, the commission has a wide range of authority, so even though there's a deputy, if they're not pleased with that deputy, they have a wide range of power that they can utilize to put whoever they want in that position.
Is everybody okay with that?
So, Madam Chair, just to make sure we're clear, so if we have a situation where the city manager is removed for cause, are we going to have separate language that states how that process would work versus where if a city manager went on vacation or returning to leave or something like that, are we going to have separate language to say how we're going to appoint us, how the city managers or deputy would be step up or how we're going to do that?
Just work the Carl Benson.
Yeah, that was just all to the standard language of how the city manager is appointed by the.
Okay, so the whole process is more per term?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, this is, go ahead.
I think what occurred is that if this sudden firing or dismissal from your job, there will be a way for somebody in that department to pick up responsibility.
And that's 229, though.
Yeah, that's what 229. But if I'm fired, if the person was fired, then the commission or the mayor might appoint some other person within the government on interim basis to be the city manager because they might be more qualified or in their wheelhouse to do something. That's just kind of practice.
That's right. Most of the motions we had on the meeting that got tabled today would have dovetailed all this. So if I don't have anybody else with their hands raised, let's come down to.
I'd also just make sure that under powers of the commission, we had this mentioned earlier, because that's what you would put that language there, under powers of the commission. I have, I don't know if you all have read this.
Did you see this?
Oh, it's on.
Yeah, there's two of them. Bring that back up to me, that's not great. Two things I want to point out, Laurie, this is the language you're planning on using for council interference that we'll also piggyback on, says that the manager supervision, employees who are subject to the direction supervision of the manager, report solely through the manager and neither the city council nor its members shall give orders to any such officer, employee, employee either publicly or privately. That is the base language that will set the table for the ethics ordinance when we get to that point. All right. The next thing I want you to take a look at is, here's Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, which Mayor elected at large, and it talks about everything we voted on earlier today about Mayor Pro Tem being elected in the first meeting, and then it picks up where they went on this here that we're going to ask that to bring language back on. Okay? Anybody have any, I think they all agree with her. All right.
It may not be in there, Madam Chair, but again, I have an issue with the practice of if you have a black mayor and then you have a white mayor pro tem. So it may not be here where we address that, but I got an issue with that.
I don't think, it's not written down anywhere that I know of.
It's a gentleman agreement.
It's a gentleman.
Yeah, right.
It just gets to die.
Yeah, so you're saying.
Oh, Laurie, no, they talk about that, it used to be in the paper and everything else.
So we don't address it, we just allow the practice to continue? Oh, we don't have any input?
We don't have a say. I don't think we do have a say, but you certainly don't have to endorse it.
Frank, yeah. I don't think we have to say so, if that's what they do is commission, and they're elected, they're mayor pro tem, I don't think we have to say so.
Well, there's something that they vote on, because they have a vote on, so as long as it meets the requisite, you know, number of votes that's required, there's no way to prove that that's actually what's happened.
It's not, because the party's not white.
No.
I mean, technically it happened on our committee.
Just a reminder that we do have. So here's the next question, we've got two last questions, and they're generic questions, not leading to motions this time, but it would be helpful for us trying to drop some other things. Does anybody have heartburn about prohibiting city employees sitting on boards and authorities?
What type? What you're talking about?
None of us, any city employee, we have the land bank is completely populated by city employees.
One, nine.
One, one, nine, okay. One, nine.
Yeah, but they only have like six board members, I think, so it's a very small one. And the administrator is one of them, if I remember correctly.
That is how the ordinance or the law is organized, if that's how the law is drafted, so it's by law.
And, and some authorities.
We don't have anything to say about authorities, we do about boards. The airport is still a board, lots of money falling through that airport.
Your composition of your boards, that's board discriminist, not, that's not within the letter of the charter. So that's an issue you can take up separately with your elected officials and they can come together and draft another ordinance, so that changes the composition and make up a board.
All right. I think, let's see, that's Jim's comment here. I think here's what we're going to do, we'll work really hard this week to get our, the motions that are supposed to be moved to this next meeting, and you guys can all weigh in, if anybody has an objection, it will go back on to the vote individually, but otherwise the drive will be to push things toward a consent agenda. The game plan in my mind for the next meeting is to start, I think we're about 99% of the way on your questions, you guys. Can you, you know, that list we went over and everything else, pretty well in cap?
Yeah.
You're in good shape, you can identify something you might need a decision on, but otherwise I think we're in great shape. Angela, can I finish? I know you're coming, I'm just finishing in. You wanted to know where we're going, the next meeting we're going to be delving into finance issues that are still outstanding out there, and I would highly recommend that if it's possible to do things with a consent agenda, we want to do that so we have more time to discuss, ask questions, identify issues, and then come into the work sessions to generate the motions for the second November meeting, which is only seven days to go. And I'm going to need everybody's help and brain power on the table because we've got to put an agenda together within 20 hours of leaving the morning meeting next week, when our next meeting is. It's like an impossible ask, but that's, we're legally.
It was either that or meet on Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, that or meet on Thanksgiving, that's right. Okay, Ms. Backer, you had a comment you wanted to make on?
I think our conversation today takes care of motion B, correct? So we don't, we don't have any need to discuss B moving forward since we discussed.
Let's everybody vote, or you may not have.
B.
All right. Yep, I think it is covered for that.
So that's regarding the deputy manager. Can we discuss the number of votes it'll take to hire and fire the city manager?
Six.
I personally think seven is fair. It is a little bit more serious, that's the person that's the CEO of your government.
Seven, I'll support six.
All right, let's hear pros and cons.
I got a question. What, some kind of legal issue about it needs to be the same amount to hire or terminate, or am I wrong?
We can stipulate it. So let's have a discussion on six or seven.
I think seven makes it too difficult for the commission to operate. It should make it very easy to up or down, being that six makes that possible, seven's complicated.
All right, Angela?
I think one thing that was brought up at the town hall meeting by a lot of different people, and I felt like they had a good point in saying that if we want to recruit quality people to our government, we have to give them some kind of security, not this side of the, the guy is mad at me, so I need to worry about my job, and seven gives them a little bit more security. Plus, as they said, you know, six is everything else that the commission does, alcohol licenses and, you know, can you build this house? You know, this is somebody who's running our entire city, and I feel like it does deserve a little bit more attention in order to hire and fire them.
Okay. Carl Benson, will you weigh in on the experience?
I don't really think it's required for Carl Benson to weigh in on this.
No, no, I just want them, because I can't tell whether this conversation has been had with the entire committee or just us. It would be worth 30 seconds.
So managers in general can count to six?
Yeah.
They could count to seven for that matter, but they're, the professional norm is generally making sure you have a simple majority, that you're, now the goal is to keep everybody happy, right? But the kind of professional norm is, as long as you can count to whatever the majority is, you're in a reasonable position as a manager. But that doesn't mean that if you couldn't do something differently, especially if you're a community that has challenges.
Your job security comes from the contract. The contract of the board, you take care of that in your negotiated contract. We have no obligation to make an effort other than what it is. Once you are an at-will employee and your employee decides to dismiss you by whatever means is necessary, they can do that. If it means paying the guy 10, 50 million dollars to go away, or that, LSU, you know, 54 million dollars to go away, so be it. But that's why they have the contract that they have to protect themselves, that way, so protection function to writing the contract, not necessarily the votes.
But we also discussed it being an at-will, so Georgia is an at-will state, so it doesn't, I mean, your contract is only.
It doesn't trump a contract.
That definitely, because you see in the contract, they have clauses that even on the, like four cause, so it gets very complicated, so.
But it might be at-will, but for instance, you don't always, but you could.
Exactly.
Not always, you could, so you can negotiate protections. Now, that doesn't go to whether or not you want seven or six, I just wanted to give you that information.
Okay. Can I throw another little grenade in here for you guys to consider that we've never even talked about? Both Georgia Municipal Association and National Civic League recommend not putting term limits for commissioners or the mayors.
Who? Excuse me? What was that last one?
Recommend?
Recommends no term limits, and their rationale is, let the voters decide if they like the person they've got, they'll vote them back in, but ultimately they hold the power on that.
This is where we remind you that those are simply recommendations, and you want to make sure that you're tailoring this to Augusta.
That's right. So I'm waiting to hear what my kind of like to have to say here, because.
Yeah, I don't like that idea. I actually think Congress should have term limits, because I think when you have an incumbent, sometimes people are scared to run against them. So I think that's how some people in Congress keep their positions.
Yeah.
So I like term limits locally.
What about the rest of you?
Term limits.
Okay. Can we put that on as a motion next week?
What are they? Didn't we discuss that?
Yeah, we discussed that. There are currently term.
Two term limits.
Two full terms.
Yeah, so look at what you have, and if you want to make changes, then bring back suggestions, but we do have that currently in our charter for the.
All right, we can leave it alone, but again, we have to affirm for the majority. So if we want to leave it the way it is, then.
Yeah, I think, I think we did discuss it at, we also, we also voted that we leave it like we did. We put the term.
A couple of them we decided to retain.
Okay.
Yeah. Situation that we need to retain.
All righty, well, it's good to know. Does anybody have anything else we need to check up on? Mr. Coleman?
He was asking about six or seven.
Six.
Okay. No, six.
Six.
Okay. All right.
You might want to do rather than people shouting, just so I can get it, go around the table.
So let's start with Robert, Sheppey came back in, we're talking about.
Six or seven.
Six or seven votes to discharge the mayors.
To hire.
And.
So let me clarify this, so with seven, that's a two-third of them.
Two-thirds is eight.
Two-thirds would be eight, okay.
That's a seven point something, but.
But that's, that would be an exception to anything the commission has ever done, seven. We have six right now.
I prefer a four-trip in the charter.
The commission acts on six.
Six, yeah.
And I don't think we should make the man.
Robert, you start, let's go around, let's take a straw poll.
Straw poll.
Straw poll.
Yeah.
Six versus seven? I see a majority.
Okay. Brad?
Six.
Six.
Okay.
Six.
Six.
Seven.
Seven.
Surprise, surprise, surprise.
I mean, the thing to consider is, you know, you said it's based on what they've already done, we have our city manager, so it doesn't matter, and what they've already done.
Well, you don't want to make it more difficult to remove somebody who's ineffective, and that's what you're doing.
Well, if they're that ineffective, you should be, it would be easy to use them all.
Yeah, but you want to keep them not in the political realm. They're supposed to be separate.
So we have the same amount of votes for a. You have the same amount of votes for a department head as a city manager?
Okay. And then I'm going to like. Frank?
Madam Chair, I think before we close up, did we accomplish what we came up here to accomplish this afternoon in regards to these motions that. accomplish this afternoon in regards to the motions that they moved forward?
We did, we may have, I, I, we're going to take a look at it tomorrow.
I think we did.
And what, the goal will be to put as many of those motions we handled today. Do we have to endorse some?
You don't have to write one on tape when they can stand on tape.
Okay, well, but I mean, in terms of giving you the legs to stand on to go ahead and write, write the language, do you need us to put this through on a motion on the 13th or whatever day it is?
Can you give me the motion in order for you guys to-
I mean, I can write it anytime. I can always, you can make a different decision. I can always just change it with what goes in front of you. Let's, let's, yeah.
Let's write. Okay. Ms. Casey has a question.
Yeah. When is the next time that we need to sign up for, if we want to speak, and when is the next meeting, and when would we have the agendas?
Because I was going to change.
Because it's not, it's not on the, on the website, so I mean, I don't know.
Meeting is adjourned. November 13th is the next meeting. So she will want the-